Okay, welcome everyone. Today we have a special joint meeting between City Council and Planning Commission. Thanks you all for coming. Today is Tuesday, March 28th, for the record, and for those our viewing audience. The meeting is getting started right around 3:30. We're located at the Veterans Memorial Hall. For the record, we do have a quorum of City Council and Mr. Chair, Dr. Taft. Do we have a quorum of our Planning Commission?
Mayor Irenz, all members of the Planning Commission are present. Planning Commission is called to order.
Great, thanks. Great to have you guys. And for that, we'll call the meeting to order. And we will be opening up for public comment. We don't have any speaker slips. You know, we could get through that. I just want to open up for a little bit of clarification prior to our presentation. Scott, if you can maybe do some introductions and then clarifications prior to a public comment would be great.
Okay, so we have with us here this afternoon, Michael Baker, our consultant for the general plan update. We have Amy and Jeff here. One of the points of clarification we'd like to make, there's been some concern related to the land use maps that we've been presenting, especially in the north end of town for the tank site that sits up off of Panorama. And we have the, so the existing land use of the tank farm site, which is that bright yellow sort of square rectangle area there. The current land use designation of that piece of property is medium density residential. And as part of the general plan update land use review, the proposal is to change it to moderate density residential, which equates to R1 zoning. And so some concern was that we were going to leave it the medium density, and then it was going to have an R2 designation with it potentially when we got to zoning. We haven't gotten to zoning yet. We're not doing that yet. But we did get inputs from the public that the desired land use for that location is moderate density, which again equates to the R1 zoning. And there was some confusion about, you know, amongst the public, at least the folks living in that area of town, that perhaps we were looking to have a higher zoning, you know, in that location. So that's not the intent. The intent is to have it R1, which would be the same land use classification under zoning that exists in the surrounding neighborhood, so.
Great, Scott. Thanks for that.
Yep.
So when we, prior to open up for public comments, so this is a joint meeting between Planning Commission and City Council will be reviewing land use classifications as presented by Michael Baker and Associates and all the work from G-PAC. We'll have some clarifications from that in our presentation. When we get through the process of that, following the presentation, we'll be guided through kind of step by step, so we'll go through one step at a time. We will be taking pause for input and questions on those. And then I think there's also one point, and Scott, can we clarify that now before we get started, on the point where myself and Councilmember Heading will recuse herself from one slide and one section of this?
Yeah, that's for the item I, which is the gateway, downtown gateway section. Both of you have property within that area, and so my understanding that we're going to, when we get to that slide and that section, we're going to skip past it and push it to the end of the discussion, so that we can continue through with having, you know, all of the council up there. And then when we get to the last, to the end, we'll push it to the end, and we'll discuss it then. And then both you mayor and Councilmember Heading can step down, as you have properties within that area.
Okay. Mr. Penoni, do you have any comments for that? No, we're good? Okay, good. So with that, we'll open up for public comment. For all those who would like to speak to this issue, please come forward.
Good afternoon, City Council and Planning Commission. My name is Rigmore, resident of Morro Bay. I skimmed through the text on the land use and zoning. I put my trust in all of you to do a good job. However, I'm always nervous of what you will allow along our waterfront, where we luckily still have some undisturbed areas left. In particular, the open bay water area right below here between Gaffco and Beach Street. I am not one of those super crazy environmentalists who do not want buildings or constructions anywhere, but I hope you will preserve and protect the amazingly natural areas we have here. I had some friends visiting a few weeks ago, and one sent me a thank you email, and there's a section I want to read for you. Her name is Manya Bendikian from Canada, but now an architect in San Francisco firm. She has traveled literally all over the world, designed train station buildings in Scandinavia, Turkey, Dubai, et cetera, and she fell in love with Morro Bay. And Manya wrote, "I had never heard about this breathtaking town you live in. There are very few places in the world that remind me of Morro Bay. The natural beauty, the presence of the bay and estuary contrasting with the crashing waves of the Pacific Ocean. You are so blessed to be living in such a wonderful place." Sunday morning, I walked to the end of Surf Street, to what I considered to be the most breathtaking view, went down the stairs to the Embarcadero, and came across a gathering of sea otters and their children in the water by the wooden pier. There must have been over 20 mother sea otters with their children resting on them. I was not going to have noticed them if it was not for the 50-plus people gathering around them with their giant zoom lens cameras. Families with young children, many generations gathered to observe this wonderful offering from nature. I hope nothing would ever replace this natural spectacle or disrupt the habitat of these sea animals. Well, I hope the same. Our bay is a natural aquarium. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rigmore. How many people want to speak for public comment? Can I see a show of hands? Just want to get, okay, good. I'm just going to, come on up. We would love to hear from you. Public comment's open. Thank you. If we can keep it moving, we'd like to hear it from everyone and be able to get through the presentation with our Planning Commission and City Council on this. Thanks.
Thank you. My name is Glenn Silaway. I'm a resident of Morro Bay. Tonight, I'm speaking to you as the Chair of the Morro Bay Open Space Alliance. On your agenda tonight is Study Area 1, which is an area that is primarily territory currently owned by Chevron. And it is an important piece of open space that the Morro Bay Open Space Alliance has discussed within itself. In January, we had a meeting attended by 90 people plus eight members of our board to discuss, to learn about Chevron property and to talk about it. This is not a representative sample, I understand that, but it is a large contingency, and I think it represents a very deep strain of thinking in Morro Bay that you might want to consider as you discuss Study Area 1. I want to share some results of a feedback form we got from 58 of the people who volunteered some thoughts about the area regarding whether or not to put Study Area 1 in the sphere of influence. A total of 21 of the respondents actually preferred to leave that area in the county. The majority, therefore, would accept some degree of sphere of influence, but we didn't have a firm scope on the size of it. Your proposal is fairly limited, and it does, it is similar to what we had proposed earlier in January to G-PAC. We asked what kinds of uses people would like to know, like to see in the Chevron territory. When it was visitors serving commercially, including full-on commercial venues, the group was generally opposed to it. You would expect that, since it is Open Space Alliance, and the people are self-selected to be supporting open space. When we pushed a little further and asked if they would support a campground that would be public access and funded by fees, about 70% said that they would support that kind of a development. When it came to biking and hiking trails, it was virtually unanimous. People understand what a beautiful place this is and how important it could be for our recreation and passive use access. Now, as you know, I mean, I'm sure all of you know, Chevron is engaged in negotiations with some conservancy groups over potential changes in development rights and performance and use of this area. And the Open Space Alliance understands that this kind of a discussion is something that has to be taken very carefully and that we're seeking a single agreement. So we are not going to be putting any specific demands or options on the table for that conservancy discussion. But I think you all need to be aware that, at some point, because Morro Bay is adjacent to some of this Chevron territory, as you see in Study Area 1, you will be asked to participate or to discuss and to respond to pieces of it. So we think, keep that in mind as you discuss this area.
Thank you, Glenn. Next for public comment, please.
Hi, I'm Dave Schumaker. I'd like to speak on the Chevron property as well. So I'm Dave Schumaker. I live at 460 Luzon Street in Morro Bay. I live five doors down from Panorama Street in North Morro Bay. I am concerned about possible consequences resulting from the sale and development of the Chevron property on the land above Panorama Street. That hill has a history of sliding. There was a major landslide of that hill in the late 1990s. FEMA paid quite a bit for damage done to property along Panorama Street. The hill continues to creep today, as evidenced by the constant flow of mud across Panorama Street between Luzon and Island Streets during and after rainstorms. There is very little level land above Panorama Street, so any excavations for access roads, driveways, and foundations could further destabilize the hillside. Chevron is hoping the city of Morro Bay will agree to hook up sewer and water to the property, enabling them to sell the property for a much higher price. After the area is annexed into the city, the city would gain little while taking on the full responsibility and liability of the hillside when it slides. As I understand it, Chevron is hoping to sell the properties along Panorama in order to make up for profits lost on the other lots that might be declared open space or some other designation that would limit development. I am concerned that the Panorama Street lots will be used as trade material to secure hiking and bike trails in other areas of the property. Allowing development on the property above Panorama Street could endanger a whole neighborhood for the sake of some trails. Chevron has been described as a good neighbor by a resident who lives on Panorama Street. I am happy to hear that. As a good neighbor, I hope Chevron will be forthcoming with all the data and information they have relating to what they have done to try to stabilize the hillside since the slide in the late 1990s. I feel there should be an independent geologic survey made to determine the stability of the hillside. For the, the sky's falling. For the safety of the neighborhood directly below Panorama Street, I hope we can let geology, not economics or politics, determine what the hillside can handle in regards to development. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comments open?
My name is Robert Walker. I live on Whidby Street, and I just wanted to confirm what I thought I heard from Scott about the 3300 Panorama. And that is going to be R1. Is that correct? Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Public comments open, next, please.
My name is John Bruckner. I also live in North Morro Bay. And my concern is lots 33 through 41, according to your plan, which you wish to change into possibly R1, should they be annexed. I would also not, unlike Mr. Schumacher, disagree with any kind of development up there due to the soil stability, hydrology conditions, and also this is a wildlife corridor. We have microtoy birds that are protected under treaties. The other thing, of course, is that we are unique in Morro Bay in that we are the gateway to Big Sur. We are the gateway to Highway 1. People first see the ocean when they come up from Los Angeles, right here. They come over that hill, they see the ocean. This is the gateway. If we build on that, incrementalism will definitely follow. You get one set of houses, the lots will be subdivided in the future. This is not a new pattern. This thing has happened in the valley, it's happened in Los Angeles and Santa Barbara. So essentially, I am fully against any development up there other than campgrounds, mountain biking trails, and hiking trails. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Public comment is open. Please come forward.
Hello, my name is Don Hedlund. I live at 498 Yerba Buena Street. I came to speak about the Chevron, not the Chevron, the pump station and the zoning, and I just want to urge that you keep it as an R1. I think that is the decision made tonight as to how that property will be zoned in the density. I'm not really sure of the process, but it has been mis-zoned as R2 for the last couple of months, and we're very glad to hear that it's been changed to what it should be, which is R1. And the density, I believe, is four to seven homes per acre. So that's why I came to speak. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Don. Next for public comment, please.
Is it possible, excuse me, is it possible to put something up on the viewer?
Sure. If you want to get that ready, we can call AGP up. If we can get them out, maybe have another speaker come up while they're preparing to keep things going. Do we have anybody else for public comment, please? Come on up. Thank you. Just want to keep the flow going a little bit. Thank you. Come on up, Tina. Thank you.
Tina Metzger, Morro Bay. I was gone most of February out of town, and I noticed in the February 28th consent agenda, and this is an issue that is sort of the umbrella effect of so much of what we're deciding upon, the mission statement was changed. And it was adopted without any public comment, or it was adopted on the consent agenda. And I'd like to know why the city manager felt it was justified to change our mission statement, and why, what's the justification for leaving out, "The city of Morro Bay is dedicated to the preservation and enhancement of the quality of life." If you could explain that to all of us here this evening, this afternoon, I would really appreciate it. And what was the background of this mission statement being changed and put on the consent agenda? Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coordinating that with us. Thanks.
No, thank you for helping me out. My name is Peter Beeman, and we're a business owner here in Morro Bay, and also our home is located at 965 Pelican Place. And you can see where it's circled there. There are three tiny little houses there. Some people, a lot of people don't even know where this place is, but it's down at the end of the dunes, kind of overlooks where the, overlooks where Wavelength's parking lot is. Our house is maybe 1,000 square feet, and we make a sacrifice to live there because it's a nice location. The houses on each side of us are around the same size. These are downslopes. There's no room there at all to do anything. These properties are zoned visitor service. So I could hardly open a restaurant there. I could hardly open a grocery store there, or any other endeavor that's allowed in visitor service. And I think it's, I don't know how that happened, but there's no possibility of extra parking, no possibility of being able to do this type of thing. So I wanted to bring this to your attention and have you consider a more appropriate usage or allowed usage for that, those three sites, of being residential, probably R1 or R2. It makes no sense how they're zoned at this point. Anyway, thank you very much for your time, and I don't know, does anybody have any questions about this?
Thanks, Peter.
No, thanks a lot.
Thank you very much. Next for public comment, please. Seeing none, I'll close it.
Mayor, members of the council and planning commissioners, my name is Vic Montgomery, and I'm here this afternoon on behalf of Chevron Corporation. And I have some very brief remarks I'd like to make. One, we're part of Study Area Number 1, and we appreciate the city undertaking a look at Study Area Number 1 as a part of your update. As has been mentioned here before, we're sort of in the throes, if you will, of discussions with three land use conservancies, the city and the county of San Luis Obispo, trying to bring together a holistic solution to the future of all 3,000 acres of Chevron's property. Some of that property has been sold, in particular, some of the lots north of Toro Creek Road have been sold. There are a lot of moving parts. These properties also include the area owned by Chevron west of Highway 1, the Dog Beach, those sorts of areas. And they include, in particular, an area east of Highway 1 known as the Chevron Shore Plant, which is where the buildings are that Chevron has used for many years. Also includes an area north of Toro Creek itself, adjacent to Toro Creek Road, that is in the city today and zoned industrial. And we think there needs to be some dialogue about the future of that as well. We've presented the G-PAC several alternatives. We've met with them, I don't know, three or four times. We've conducted a lot of tours, taking people up to the site so they can see what we're talking about. The most recent discussions have been about the lots above Panorama. There are, depending on whether you include what's known as Lot 15 or not, there are either 10 or 11 lots above Panorama. There are some that front directly on Panorama, and then as you go up the hill at the very top, there's a whole nother series of five lots that go up and kind of level off. We've been in discussions with G-PAC and other people about what to do with those lots. And one idea that's been put forward is to make a major portion of those lots to be agriculture and open space and restrict development on them. And to take the density from those lots and concentrate it along Panorama in lots of approximately a half acre. And to have that area come into the city sphere, the whole area, including all of those lots up there, and then annex the property in the future. As I said, we're talking about half acre lots. We have done some investigation and recognized the constraints of that area above Panorama. Chevron's aware of the slides. We've looked at the county's geology studies. So we believe there's more work to be done to identify precisely where they are. Do you want me to stop? I have a couple of things.
You may have to wrap it up, please. Thanks.
Okay. One thing I will say, the county has used the word "open space" in conjunction with the balance of the area on these lots above Panorama. We're concerned about that because the city definition of open space has issues with regard to agriculture as an ongoing use. And just for weed maintenance and other things, there's going to need to be some agricultural use within the sphere of influence if these lots come in. And other than that, I'm finished, unless you have questions.
Thank you. Thanks. Anybody else for public comment? Come on up. Anybody else for public comment? If you, okay, thanks.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Planning Commission and City Council. My name is Evans Cowan, and I'm a resident of North Morro Bay. I have a question. It was noticed that this is a special meeting, and then up there it says this is a study session. So my question to you is, is this the beginning? Is this like a draft form, the Michael Baker team and the G-PAC and all that? Because this is the first I've known about how this is being put together, because I have other comments, but probably not today. If there's going to be some future meetings with future open mic and discussions, is this the first of a few meetings to come that's going to be part of this rezoning in this master plan?
We'll address those when we go through the presentation.
So it sounds like a yes?
Yeah. Typically, for public comment, we take comment and not, we don't necessarily have dialogue, so we will take your comments, and then we can address those when we open up the presentation and make sure that your comments and your questions are addressed.
Okay. Because in the future, I do have some specific issues on some targeted things, so I just want to hopefully, there's going to be some more.
Welcome.
Dan Knight. I'm representing a property owner on Island Street. City Council, planning commissioners, thank you for your time. I just wanted to offer our support for kind of the synopsis in Site E, talking about the character of the neighborhood changing to where the commercial should be serving the neighborhood as opposed to serving the highway. It appeared to me, from reading the package, that we're going to kind of move dirty commercial out of that area and kind of make it barber shops, grocery stores, et cetera. After talking to several of the property owners and taking a drive-through there myself, we think that that's an excellent plan to move all of the commercial onto Main Street, drawing it out of the neighborhoods and keeping that R1 and for family homes, single occupancies, and families to enjoy that area. Also, talking about the Chevron parcel. I'd also like to say that I'm very supportive of the geological study there, but as Mr. Montgomery said, kind of a joint effort between Chevron and property owners to come to collaborative outcome on that one. And then I wanted to specifically speak against, if I'm understanding, the node model for Site E, where you tried to cluster all of the commercial, we're much more supportive of elongating all of the commercial along Main Street there and then making it just the first lot in. So we just wanted to give the comments from a couple appreciative property owners.
Thank you. We have a hand for public comment.
My name is Roy Senawalt. I own an apartment building, 3100 Main.
Could you repeat your name, please? I didn't hear it.
Roy Senawalt, C-I-N-O-W-A-L-T.
Thank you.
I would like to address code enforcement. A lot of what is laid out in the proposals here looks great on paper. But over the years, as I mentioned, I have investment property apartments, and I have a hobby of going around looking at investment properties. I looked at a lot of them in Morro Bay, and some realtors would advertise six, seven, or eight units for sale, plus a bootleg income from a garage rental or two. Advertised right in the newspaper, you know, multiple. And when I looked at them, sure enough, guy living in the garage, door cut to the side of the building. When down to planning, code enforcement filed papers. Went back three months later, guy's still there in the garage. Went to planning. What happened to my request? Come to find out, they had no code enforcement officer. I did this about 10 times before I realized it went into the wrong file. Nothing was done. My question is, if you lay out a template for a master plan for building codes, and you don't enforce them, or you allow conditional use permits, what is the meaning of having them in the first place? It's an exercise in academic futility, all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking in the audience, so I'm just going to go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the two boards, and just make sure there's any clarifications on some of the comments. I'm going to look to Scott on any of that. I know we're going to, so for Mr. Cohen, I think there's some explanations on the process. I think we'll cover that when we get to that. We did have a question on the mission statement, which was actually, there was a process in which that was at, one of the steps was a workshop for general plan LCP updates, Scott. I think he might be able to refresh us on that process. Then it went to the general, the city council for discussion. It was noticed there, went and then was finalized on consent. So there's a little bit of a process to that. I just want to open to that.
Yeah, I think the city council talked about it twice, perhaps, before it was adopted.
We actually had kind of input from folks at a workshop.
Yeah, there was a workshop, sorry. I wasn't at the workshop.
Yep.
But yeah, there was a workshop for it, yeah.
And then, and then maybe.
I got a question on that.
Just a minute, just a minute, please, as we get through the meeting, please. So then, and then we have code enforcement. Did you want to respond to it?
Code enforcement, my guess is that was from a while ago. Obviously, now we have an active code enforcement program. We have two code enforcement officers who go out on a daily basis and, you know, and respond to complaints similar to what Mr. Sedawalt talked about. So, you know, if he sees things like that in the future, he should bring it to our attention. We'd be happy to go investigate it.
All right. Good. And as we go forward, I just want to make sure, so we're going to open up for our presentation tonight. We're going to do some explanations on process, where we're going from here. If we have time at the end, we can maybe take some public comment at the end, but we've got a lot to go through, so we want to keep it moving. So I'll leave it to you, Scott, to make the introductions, and Jeff to start us off on the presentation.
Excuse me, I got a question here on the process.
Richard, when you want to address the board, you can address the board and say, I would like to have, make a comment. Right now, we're finishing up this presentation. We're, I'm explaining the process here. When you want to make a comment, address the board and say, hey, I would like to make a comment.
Hey, I would like to make a comment.
Okay. I'm saying, just a minute, I'm going to finish up with the presentation, and then I'll turn it back and respond to what we're talking about. Okay? And then we're going to get into the discussion of what we're here for in the general plan. So just a minute, and I'll turn it back, and you can make your comment. So Jeff, you're going to open it up for explanation. There's some people in the audience that want to know what that is. As we go through this, we're going to go through item by item, and you're going to kind of guide this process, and we're going to follow along with the presentation. Our planning commission will go ahead and start with their input, and then it'll come up to council, and we'll go make through our comment. You'll be going through your notes. This is kind of the exercise we went through last time. And then we'll go on to the next item and the next item. We'll keep our, we'll try to synthesize and keep our comments brief and concise, because we've got a lot to get through, and then we'll go from there. Mr. Sedowski, you have some comments.
I got a comment, a couple of questions. It's not really clear to me on that follow-up where the public speaker mentioned about the consent agenda, where you removed and changed the vision statement and removed the quality of life out of that statement. I would like to have a little bit more explanation on that. And why, why wasn't this presented to the planning commission separately, where we could have an organic discussion on all this? This is the first time we're seeing it without the, you know, without the time constraints of having back-to-back meetings.
Okay. So the mission statement, we're here, this is a notice meeting for the general plan LCP update. I responded to the question, and if there's more questions on that, we'll take up that discussion separately. I want to focus on the agendized meeting at hand. So Tina, I can, I could talk with you more about that. As far as going through the G-PAC and how we're noticing it with the planning commission, part of the presentation, Scott, I'm going to look to you to kind of do a little bit of explanation on this process. So, Richard, your question will be answered, and so I'm going to leave it to Scott to start talking about process, why we're here, and what we need to do to keep it going. So I'm going to turn it over to them, and we'll get some answers there. So Scott, you want to lead off, please?
Certainly. So, I mean, process, we've been, you know, working much of the general plan update through our general plan advisory committee. We've been taking the input from them, synthesizing that. They've, the general plan advisory committee is an eight-member body at this point, and we're, they're sort of leading our interactions with the public. We have, we've had several workshops with them, where they've helped engage the community and take input. Out of that, we're taking that input, bringing that in. We're getting written comments from our general plan advisory committee, as well as oral comments, and we're synthesizing, synthesizing, easy for me to say, into the work product that you're looking at this evening, and we're looking at getting sort of at least general concurrence on our land use alternatives that we have, that we're going to present to you here in a minute, so we can move forward with policy development. So the next phase in this would be moving on to the development of actual general plan policy. But we have to have the land use component of this squared away first. So that's what we're hoping to get here this evening. I don't know, is there more of a process explanation that you wanted from that?
No, I think we talked a little bit about this today in preparing for the meeting. We talked about, so we've had some, and I want to stay focused on the agenda item. I don't want to get too sid, get too distracted from a topic on where we are with whether or not the general plan advisory board is reviewing this, or whether the planning commission. We're going to go through this meeting today and review all this. If there's a question on whether or not we want to have 10 more steps into this process, we can discuss that towards the end. And I think it's important that we have some clarity on that, because based on some of the emails that were transferred down, is there's some concern whether or not the general plan didn't make recommendations on this, and why there wasn't more discussion there, why it came into the body the way it did here. And I want to just talk about that briefly.
I mean, there is, there has been some discussion at the general plan advisory committee level. There, at least has been, you know, some of the members, you know, expressing a desire to, you know, have more of a comprehensive review process that they do and then make a recommendation moving forward. There's a problem with that process, though. I mean, we have fixed timelines for this update, and we have fixed resources that are associated with it. Half of this effort is being funded through grant funds, and our work product is due to the Coastal Commission and Ocean Protection Council, no later than December of 2018. If we were to go at the G-PAC level, line by line, through everything that we produced, we would never get there. It's just not part of the process that we can, we can't engage that fully and have them do that type of work. We have the planning commission. We'll be engaging them more as we move forward to get those recommendations on policy. And we're getting ready to start the zoning code. They'll be making recommendations out of that to the, to the city council. You're going to get them from that side of things, but we're going to continue to work with the G-PAC and kind of synthesize the information that we get to bring it forward. But it's probably not going to be in the form of, you know, a recommendation format, simply because we would never be able to get to the end product in the timelines that we have. And it would require the expenditure of more resources towards this, because we'd have to have several more meetings. And that's just, that's not in the scope of the budgets. And it's just, we, we have this thing lined out. I know we're going to be having a meeting with the G-PAC and the council coming up here. We're working on dates and times for that right now. So the city council will have an opportunity to talk specifically with them. And I think that's valuable, especially where we're at right now, because we certainly don't want the G-PAC getting frustrated with the process.
Right.
I think it's important for them to hear what the council's expectations are, and I think they'll really appreciate it. So I'm looking forward to that, and it looks like we'll be having that in April. So I think we'll get a little more, you know, into that conversation then.
Great. Thanks for that. Let's get started.
Okay. Jeff?
All right. Thank you, Mayor, council members, Chair, Commissioners. Pleasure to be here this evening to present what we're, what we're characterizing as the preferred alternative for the land use plan for Plan Morro Bay, which is, again, the city's general plan and local coastal program update. Little bit of an outline to our presentation, just to reinforce what the mayor had suggested. Little bit of an introduction, status update to where we are in the process. Amy's going to do a summary of the existing land use classification and proposed land use classification systems, in terms of how we categorize land uses in Morro Bay. And then we're going to walk through preferred land use alternatives that are the result of some discussion with the general plan advisory committee, some additional research on behalf of staff and the consultant team, that is resulting in a recommendation to the planning commission and the city council regarding a preferred land use option for certain areas within the city, as well as study areas outside the city, where land use change could be a part of how you can achieve the vision and guiding principles that have been set forward for the general plan and local coastal program update. I'm sorry. I have to kind of watch this in two directions here. So project updates, a little bit of an update as to where we are today. On the community outreach front, we have begun the process of initiating the zoning code update, which is another component of this work program. The general plan advisory committee at their last meeting had an introduction to that portion of the work program, and that will be something that is a part of the upcoming agendas for the general plan advisory committee as currently planned. And that, and those meetings will continue to occur on a monthly basis for the foreseeable near-term future. On the land use side, that's essentially sort of where we are tonight, is thinking about the preferred land use options for the opportunity sites and study areas. And then, once we emerge from this meeting with your comments and recommendations, that enables us to begin the process of drafting the land use element and the other elements of the general plan and local coastal program update. It also presents us the opportunity to initiate the California Environmental Quality Act process, because at that point, we've got a good assessment of what the potential land uses are in the community for, as part of the general plan and local coastal program. And then the third piece is the downtown waterfront strategic plan that you may be aware of. That's a document that has been drafted. There have been public workshops on that. It's been presented to the general plan advisory committee. One of the upcoming general plan advisory committee agendas is also to receive comment from the committee on the downtown plan, with the intention then of creating that in a final form in April or May of this year. Okay, so let's talk a little bit about existing land uses in the city, and I'll turn it over to Amy.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to go pretty quickly on the existing land use, because we have a lot to cover. So I just want to give a brief overview of what you are looking at now. This map on the screen is your existing general plan land use map. We have worked to confirm that this is what you have now in the city. You will also see that the ESHA, the environmentally sensitive habitat, is outlined on there as well. We have several general categories, residential, commercial, mixed-use, industrial, and then some other types of uses like agriculture and open space, those sorts of things. You also have a set of general plan overlays, land use overlays, that are not shown on this map, but also exist currently in your general plan and LCP. We are now embarking on the process of taking a look at this and seeing what might change moving forward. As a somewhat of a side note, but very important, is we are also, as part of our work program, doing a comprehensive look at your ESHA layer and making sure that it is correct for the current conditions. And that's a critical piece for the Coastal Commission. So, next slide, please. So what we've done with the general plan advisory committee in the last, well, since the beginning of the year, is, like Jeff said, look at areas of the city where we know there is a likelihood of change in the timeframe of your general plan. Some of the examples of this are the Dynegy site and the site where your existing wastewater treatment plant is located, and look at what might occur in the future there. So we looked at several different alternatives for each of these sites. And once that preferred alternative is selected, then that, like Jeff said, that will allow us to look at policies that are part of that land use and also part of all the other elements of the general plan. A lot of the actual change, the tools that implement that change, is your zoning code. So that will be begun on in the land use process, but then completed by the zoning code in some ways. And we want to keep in mind throughout this process that we have set visions and values, vision and values as part of this process, and everything that we propose to change should align with those. Next slide. So this is a schematic of what I've just been talking about. We started by getting feedback from the community and the G-PAC and staff about where these sites might be in the city that we'd like to look at, and also in the study areas outside of the city. We received input. We've drafted some alternatives and edited them, revised them, to arrive at what we're presenting here tonight. Next slide.
Actually, if I could cut in just for a minute, just to respond to the earlier comments about process, I just wanted to point out that, you know, what's illustrated on the slide and what Amy has described is sort of a, if you will, sort of a middle piece in a longer, what is essentially becoming about a three-year process to update the city's general plan and local coastal program. Began with a series of visioning discussions roughly a year and almost a half ago now, that led us to drafting vision and values. Proceeded with some discussion of some key issues that frame some of the questions that we need to answer in the plan going forward for this 20- to 25-year plan. We're now in the phase of giving some of the answers to those questions, identifying what the land use map should express in terms of the future for Morro Bay. From here, we go into drafting the documents, further reviewing them with both the general plan advisory committee that's been appointed by the council, the planning commission and the city council, and then evaluating the potential environmental effects of those policies, which is also a public process. So we're roughly midway through about a three-year process that's had public engagement throughout, and will continue to have public engagement to allow folks to ask questions and seek clarification. So just to respond to that specific comment.
So just to follow on with what I was mentioning, I think this slide got a little bit out of order. So we do have some unmapped designations currently in the city. So they are in your plan, but they don't appear on the map currently. So that's mariculture and marine research and golf course. And then the overlays are listed as well, school, public institutional, plan development, park, restricted areas, and then interim and open space uses in industrial categories. So moving into what we are proposing in the documents before you tonight, we are proposing some modifications to your existing designations. One proposal is to the medium-density residential slash neighborhood commercial designation, to actually do away with that designation and to simply have a neighborhood commercial designation. And we'll talk about that when we talk about Site E. To eliminate mariculture and marine research, it doesn't show up on your map right now, and we feel that, based on what we've heard so far, that that can be represented, the uses that would be allowed there can be represented elsewhere. The plan development overlay, the restricted areas overlay, the park overlay, and the school overlay, and finally, the interim open space uses in industrial categories overlay, we feel that those all can be removed from your land use classifications and be implemented through the zoning, either with, for example, a school zone, or they could be implemented through other zones that, again, incorporate the uses that are represented in those overlays. For the public institutional overlay, we are proposing that that become a base zone, or I'm sorry, a base classification. And that would apply to things like, it could apply to schools, civic buildings, and so forth. So this would, we feel, clarify the role of land use classifications versus zoning, and we're happy to answer or discuss that, you know, questions about that or discuss that further. And then, on the next slide, on modifications, we do, we do think that there is work needed on the mixed-use designations. We understand that mixed-use areas A through G in your existing plan, a lot of them exist to address on-the-ground land uses that existed when the current general plan and LCP were put into place. We would propose that rather than keeping those specific areas that we come up with over all land use classifications and zoning for mixed-use areas that don't require these special subcategories. And so we would propose to have two land use designations. One would be mixed-use, and one would be mixed-use visitor-serving, to implement the mixed, current mixed-use category. This is different from the mixed-uses harbor designation. We're not proposing to change that designation. And the mixed-use visitor-serving would focus the uses more on visitor-serving, similar to the visitor-serving commercial designation, but it would allow a mixed, a mixed-use environment, mixed-use, the broader mixed-use category would not just focus on visitor-serving uses. And so both of these would allow some mix of commercial and residential. And so, both of these would allow some mix of commercial and residential. And then, these would be further defined as part of the zoning update. So, there could be more than two zones that implement the two mixed-use, land use designations. Next slide, please. So, those are the modifications and then, just briefly, I'll run through all of the proposed land use designations. So, this is a combination of some that are existing and we are not proposing to change and then the modified or new proposed. So, in the residential, we are not proposing any changes there. Next slide, please. In the commercial, the change that I already mentioned that we would be proposing is to have a standalone neighborhood commercial designation but not to have the combination of neighborhood commercial and medium-density residential. Next slide, please. Under the mixed uses, I just discussed that there would be three classifications rather than the two that we have now. We are not proposing any changes to the industrial designations. Next slide. And then, these would be the other classifications that would remain with the elimination of some of the overlays and then the public institutional becoming a base designation. Next slide, please. And, are there any questions or comments?
Start with council, or excuse me, planning commission, pardon me.
Excuse me, I'm pretty much supportive of most of that. But I've got to, when we remove the plan development overlays, how do we accomplish heightened oversight on some of the sensitive sites that we usually see come forward to the planning commission under the, those overlays?
Do you want us to respond now or how would you like to?
Well, we'd like to keep the process going but I think it's a valid question if we can get through them.
Okay. I think that one has a fairly brief response, which would be that there would be a plan development and zone. So, that would be how that would occur, rather than an overlay in the general plan.
Okay. Where would that show up? I didn't see it in any of your classifications.
So, right now, tonight, we're focusing on the general plan designations, which are more general. Thus, the title, "General Plan." And, our usual, well, we're very fortunate to be in the situation where we're working on updating both of those documents at the, basically the same time, as part of the same project and process. So, we start with the general plan designations and they are more commonly a smaller set of designations. And then, the zoning ties with them but isn't always exactly the same amount of zones or the same names. So, there can be, I think of as an umbrella of a general plan designation that could then be implemented by a variety of zones. So, the plan development zoning overlay could be placed on a general plan designation like C1, commercial. And then, it would have that additional oversight, like you said, and requirements placed on that particular parcel by the PD overlay for the zoning. So, we are not discussing the zoning tonight but that is what we would anticipate would remain in the zoning code in order to allow for a PD process.
Joe?
I think I came across in the memo. High-density would be eight to 15 units per acre, is that what I recall?
It's 15 to 27 units per acre.
Thank you, that's all I wanted to know.
I probably have about five hours of questions. The main thing I was interested in, so the mixed-use designation, you control density and things in those mixes by the zone designation to come up later?
The general plan would include some language regarding the range of anticipated uses in each of these different designations and explain how they're different in each one. The zoning would then pick up and define within each zone that implements one of these designations specifically what types of uses are permitted by right, by condition, and then also how much parking is required, setbacks, and the like. So, I mean, what the general plan does will give you a broad sense of mixed use of this character could occur here, 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 here. Zoning will come in and say, based on that character description in the general plan, here are the very precise uses that would be allowed in certain situations.
Okay. And I guess, following up on Commissioner Law's issue, the idea of an overlay for some kind of alternative proposal, is that still in here somewhere that if I have any kind of zoning, I have, or any kind of overlay, do I potentially have the ability to go in and propose some kind of planned unit development alternative to what's in here? Or is that gone?
I think that, related to Amy's earlier answer, that would be addressed through zoning. And the intent, as I understand, would be to preserve that capability for the planned unit development.
But it sounds to me like you're going to pre-advan, in advance, say which ones you're open to having as a planned development versus it being a device to come in with an alternate strategy to something that already exists as a proposal. I guess that would mean it would have to be a total rezone proposal at that point. Did you find anywhere to put the mariculture, by the way? I didn't see where it ever landed. I just saw that it looked like it could be taken care of but I didn't see where it landed. Because I think if we're looking at some kind of, in the future, some really unique thing that's here, that's nowhere else, it's, that's potentially a really interesting threat. And if we don't address that, I think we've lost an opportunity.
Did I hear correctly that you've already, the downtown waterfront strategic plan, that has been drafted already?
Yes, a public draft of that has been made available, was reviewed at a workshop.
Okay, you reviewed it at a workshop but are you going to bring it to the planning commission at any times in the near future? The reason why I'm asking is, just last week, we had a project where there was a hotel, a boutique hotel being put up. And, I found out from the applicant that the, the city's moving toward having these boutique hotels and that changes the use, the public access and the use of these properties there. And, for instance, you know, the discussion was, you know, you have a restaurant up there, you can, you still have public access. And the applicant said, yeah, you can still have public access with the hotel but, you know, that public has to have $500 a night to be able to do that. So, it changes that, that, it's privatizing view sheds is what I kind of commented on. And I would just like to see if there's going to be any, any kind of the process that you're going through. You've already been here dealing with this a year and a half and we haven't even seen it on the planning commission yet.
Dr. Teff?
Did you, did you want to respond to that or?
Well, I'll respond to the status of the downtown waterfront strategic plan. I'd need to defer response on the specifics of the individual location.
Right.
But on the downtown waterfront strategic plan, the intent is to, again, agendize that for the next general plan advisory committee, receive comments on that, and then, I believe, present it to the planning commission and city council for consideration. That's the intended pathway for that.
Okay.
Yeah, separately.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I'm sorry. I just wanted to bring forward a concept that was discussed at the G-PAC but doesn't seem to be reflected here, which is, we have a little bit of a mismatch here in that we're talking about land use categories which are quite general. And this was, this was specifically mentioned with regard to the mixed-use category, that, you know, the G-PAC would anticipate that there would be a number of different zoning categories within that land use: commercial residential, visitor-serving residential, home occupation residential, that, you know, that that would be, you know, dissected quite a bit. So, and yet, when we look at the map, we're talking very specifically. We're saying, this is the land use category for this parcel. I mean, it gets to be, you know, down to the, you know, to the nuts and bolts. So, my suggestion is that we consider these decisions to be provisional at this point. And that, as we move forward, you know, we look at an area that's zoned, that is assigned to the mixed-use land use category now, and as we move forward to start talking about what that means specifically, we may say, oh, but that doesn't really fit with this area so that we need to reserve the right to go back and revisit these land use categories as we move forward with the more specific documents.
Yeah, I think, I think that characterization is provisional, if you will, is a, is a good way to look at this. What we're, you know, no final decisions of any kind are being made here. What we're looking for here is enough of a sense of direction of, you know, is this generally on the right track that we can continue to take the next steps? And so, I think that, that's a good framework for considering sort of what these recommendations are.
Okay, thanks. And, so I'll look to my left. Red, do you want to add any questions and then anymore for council?
No questions.
Okay. Matt, John?
One quick question, just replacing the restricted area overlay with the updated ESHA designation, could you specifically tell me what might be removed and/or added and what you're thinking there, very briefly?
I don't think we can speak to actual, on-the-ground where the changes are going to happen because the process that is happening now for the ESHA update is actually to ground truth or fact-check on the ground what is correct in terms of the habitat and the other things that quite qualify something for ESHA. So, the idea would be more to consolidate those classifications underneath ESHA instead of having that separate restricted areas overlay.
Yeah, I noticed in some of the comments that you received that people suggest, or somebody at least, suggested combining the golf course in with open space recreation or recreation, and you decided against that. Is there a reason for that?
I think the idea is actually that we would do away with golf course at the general plan, or I'm sorry, we do have golf course there still. We can still consider that, definitely. I don't remember off the top of my head, I don't know if anyone else does, why we wanted to keep golf course in. I think it may have had to do with the state park ownership.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. That, that was why. Okay, thank you.
So, does that mean the golf course designation is remaining?
That's what's proposed for now.
Okay, all right, good.
Because of that different jurisdiction over the golf course.
Can I just ask one more question? Were there any other public comments relative to this that we are not familiar with at this point? Or, did the public comments generally support your revised land classifications?
We received a very wide variety of comments, so we, we did have to move forward with the proposed, a proposal tonight. So, but that's a good question. So, as you probably read in your packet but we haven't talked about during the meeting so far, this reflects a survey, both online and hard copy that was conducted over several weeks. It reflects a public workshop specifically on most of these opportunity sites. We also received comments from the G-PAC and then other, any other comments that people wanted to submit. So, all of that has been taken into consideration forming this preferred alternative.
Just for clarification, whether or not it's industrial, I'm looking at our golf course or mixed use in his example in those designations, land use designations, the zoning will, and I'm kind of, I think there's a sense of getting comfortable and understanding exactly how this is going to work. So, we get the land use designation but when we get to the zoning, and this might be Dr. Teff's question about kind of preserving some latitude to understand what's happening here as the zoning unfolds, will be able to understand the specific details of, are there specific mixed use or zoning requirements? Is it going to be, I imagine the zoning will be more detailed. So, I'm just trying to get comfortable with the proposal on land use designations and then seeing when we get to the zoning part of it, it's, it's going to be more the focused descriptions and uses.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, okay. All right, if you want to continue, thanks.
Again, this slide was just the clarification we made earlier regarding the properties in North Morro Bay. Let's talk a little about how we got to the areas that we're considering tonight because now we're going into the portion of the presentation, we'll start to look at individual locations. And, you know, we engaged in a process, going back now about four to six months, of selecting opportunity sites. And there's two categories of areas that we're going to be talking about: opportunity sites, which is a term that we use generally for properties that are located within the city limits, and study areas, which are going to be areas outside the city limits. And, for opportunity sites within the city, we're looking at parcels or areas that, you know, have been the discussion of need for change. So, as we initiate a lot of the general plan discussions, you know, there are locations that we hear about. There are also locations that staff has recommended just based on some inconsistencies or other issues that have cropped up over the years. There's also obviously an economic development component to thinking about some of these areas. They're selected based on research, again, the input from city staff, the input from the G-PAC, and the input from the community at large. As Amy indicated earlier, what we recommend in terms of sort of land use direction at this stage is then primarily accomplished or implemented through zoning, as we've been discussing. And, not all of the sites that we're going to be talking about have proposed land use changes. Some of them we're just calling out to confirm the direction. For example, the, you know, some of the, some of the sites where you've got initiatives or referendums that are addressing land use, we've called those out and essentially simply affirming the direction established by, by those ballot measures. So, not all the sites we're going to look at tonight have proposed land use changes. This first map that we're showing, which is, I think, available in your packets, is the opportunity sites overview map. You'll notice it essentially identifies some locations within the city that are identified and colored with proposed land use, and then areas outside the city, which again, represent the study areas, which are also identified by land use. We're going to begin with the opportunity sites and essentially, you know, migrate our way around the city looking at those. Again, we'll present a very brief synopsis of the recommendations and then pause for comment and direction. So, the first of these is Site A, and I'll go ahead and take the first one, and Amy and I are going to kind of flip-flop these back and forth as we go. Site A is the Dynegy Power Plant. And, you know, I think as, you know, today, it's designated predominantly for industrial use. The proposal, understanding that this is a property where dynamics will trend toward a potential alternative use, the proposal is to, or the preferred alternative is to use land use designations for the portion of the site that's owned by Dynegy with mixed use with some visitor-serving commercial facing the roadway. The land use designation for the portion of it that's on the PG&E substation site would be changed to public and institutional, and that's indicated with the blue color. And the land use designation for the triangle parking lot parcel would also be changed. I need to change the slide, I'm sorry. So, the center portion of this area that's owned by Dynegy would be designated for mixed use with some visitor-serving commercial areas down facing the roadway. The land use designation for the PG&E substation parcel would be changed to public and institutional. And the land use designation for the triangle parking lot would also be changed to public institutional, understanding that, you know, maritime museum expansion and boatyard are some of the potential uses on that triangle lot. So, that summarizes the proposal for Site A. Would be happy to entertain discussion.
Okay. Dr. Teft, planning commission?
Yeah, I was just interested, why the breakup? Because if I, if I see something like this and I'm looking at it as a developer at the power plant itself, it looks like you're willing to sacrifice these other things to keep the power plant from being developed. I mean, the triangle sites... I mean, the triangle sites, the main throat into the plant, you know, the way, the, the way the property could, could more creatively deal with the Embarcadero. I, I could even make a case that I don't know why the boundary is at the creek, why the boundary doesn't go across, and that you consider a larger envelope that considers the Route 41 terminus. Because if I'm going to invest a major amount of money potentially in a, in a commercial venture there, even if I would consider the reuse of the existing building, what I'm looking at across to the north would have a big impact on what I'm going to do there. So I think this one's really limiting, and I'd, I'd be very cautious about moving this one forward. And, and I would, I would leave the most ability for the developer to think about how to use these components. It's definitely something that in the, in the Site A, if you wanted to call it something, that there would be goals identified with that. But I, I think it's very restricted. Just having done some things like this for developers in the past with looking at property assessment, it strikes me as something very limited and could get us and lose us some opportunities as well.
What's your operational definition of public institutional?
Right, we have the actual language, we'll pull that up. If we, if it's possible to take maybe another question, we'll come back and give you that.
Okay, and then the other question is, is it, you got a switch yard over there, is this reflective of the fact that since the city is going into an agreement with Wind Energy Farm and using the outfall to run the electrical conduit into the switch yards? Is that why we're having it designated like this?
First of all, the city's not going into an agreement with a wind farm to do that.
They didn't have a, a agreement for the use of the outfall?
There, there's no agreement for that, Richard.
Is, they're not entertaining that?
At, at this point, no.
Okay.
So the, the definition of public institutional is facilities which serve the public, including government buildings and service facilities, or quasi-public facilities such as hospitals and cultural, civic, or religious resources. So it is relatively broad. And the change that we're proposing is to make it the base classification rather than the overlay. But we haven't proposed changes to the definition thus far.
Thank you.
Why hasn't the pump house been included in this site? It's a direct, there's a direct nexus or direct connection to the power plant through conduit. And then, what's the piece here?
Are you talking about the greenhouse?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, sorry about the terminology.
It's me, it's me taking the land use process on the other slide, right?
The inflow building.
Yes.
And then also the, it seems like the, the power plant needs to have more of a connection to the, to the north Embarcadero area to do a full master plan. With that, with the, the other opportunity site, do you see that neck, that connection there? Or does it have to, you know, do we have to come back to this area and do a, a special study zoning when this, when this goes into development?
I, I think it's, I think it's very likely that some of the language that we develop as it relates to this area will describe what the process would be were the, were the plant to redevelop. Like, it would tell us, go do a master plan for the site. I, I think that's completely appropriate. That's what we've been talking about to this point, and no one's, you know, looked at us and said, hey, that's, that's not the way to do it. It, it seems to make sense moving forward, so that's probably, you know, it's probably policy language that may end up coming forward for this. The, the pump house question that you asked was a good one. It's, it's not part of this slide, but it's part of one of the other slides that, that includes the land use for that area. It's just not shown here. I think it's one of the ones further down, maybe? H? Yeah, so anyway, it'll be one that's, that's coming up. It's, it's, we didn't forget it, in other words.
Excuse me. I just think realistically, we don't have a clue how this site may be redeveloped in the future. So I, to me, this area of visitor-serving and the area that's designated as mixed use is completely arbitrary. It makes more sense, kind of echoing what Michael said, it makes more sense to me if we just call this all a special planning area or, you know, interimly designated as open space with the, with the understanding that a specific plan was going to be necessary in the future, rather than sort of setting out these areas that, that really don't mean anything. And the other thing I was, the other thing I was wondering is that this little area of vacant land, which is located to the southeast between the, that straight line and the residential area, I'm wondering why that's not included? Might that not be a fairly useful site in terms of future access to, you know, to the, to the remainder of the site? Just, you know, I, I, I see it's got a, that, that, that area connects to, looks to be Main Street, so.
Scott Street. Are you talking about over to Scott Street there, Dr. Teft?
I, I, I'm not sure what street it is, but this, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, correct. It, it just seems like that might be an important piece in terms of access in the future.
Okay. And, and, you know, if it's, if it's the will of the planning commission and council, we'd be happy to entertain adding that to the area.
Okay. All right, back to council, Matt or Red, any comments?
Yeah, I agree with Dr. Teft that we don't have a clue as to how this is going to be eventually developed. But I don't mind the city giving some guidance as to how we would like to see it developed. And this seems general enough to me, and certainly the visitor-serving commercial will satisfy coastal commission requirement to, to some extent.
Matt?
Yeah, the one comment I have is, is talking about the visitor-serving commercial area, understanding from Beach Street North is Measure D property, and I understand on the east side of the Embarcadero, it's not. But however, that is parallel to the Metro D area. So in terms of calling it, a suggestion, do, do we come up with another name for it instead of visitor-serving? Do we link it somehow to Measure D or open that up for discussion between the various boards? Does that make sense?
Yeah, so, I mean, that, that concept came about because when we started looking at changing land uses in this location, we were fairly certain, because this involves the city's LCP, and land use plan, that they were going to require us to have some sort of, if we were laying out what was going to go there, some portion of it was likely going to need to be visitor-serving. And we were also offsetting potential losses, I think, of visitor-serving land elsewhere because we were making changes to some of the land uses. So that was, that was sort of the thought process behind why that, why you see that there, as we, we were reading the tea leaves and, and that seemed to be where we were probably going to end up, so.
Okay, that, that makes wonderful sense, but then I just also want to put in there to be, to consider the Measure D impact with that portion of the Embarcadero.
John?
So I'm going to echo what everybody said, but say it differently. The economic viability of developing this parcel is iffy, and, and I think you have to be nimble, and you have to be able to adapt to a proposal that does meet with the community needs. However, it has to satisfy the economic studies that'll be done by a developer that will make a proposal, so.
Thanks, John. Marlos?
And I concur with that comment and Dr. Teft's. I think it's too early and we shouldn't limit ourselves in this area. And is it possible to use the term designated as planned development or something like that that would suggest that we really don't know what the land use designation should be for this area?
If I might add, perhaps the coastal commission could be addressed by requiring that a certain number of units or a certain percentage of the property be visitor-serving commercial.
Right, that would.
Rather than specifying a, a given area.
Exactly.
I, I suppose we can find, we're going to go talk to coastal and find out. I, I have a feeling they're going to make us apply a land use, which is why I was talking about before about telling the story about, hey, we're going to do a master plan here and rolling that out. So it, so I think it's good to have, you know, very far-reaching, you know, ability to do different things there. I think that's good. But I think we're going to have to have something on it. I don't think we're going to be able to leave it sort of undefined. I have a, a feeling they're going to, going to make us do something with it for, as opposed to saving it. Hey, we're saving it over here, and it's going to come later. I think they're going to be telling us, we need to have, apply a land use and pick one. So I, I think if we had the, the requirement on it that, that says any development that comes forward is going to do the master plan process, I think we're pretty much covered there because the master plan is going to require certification by coastal anyway.
The, the master plan would essentially amend the general plan.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's what we're, by designating uses, we're saying, of the range of possible uses, these are the kinds of uses we would like to encourage here. Furthermore, we're going to require a master plan that's going to require approval by the coastal commission, which enables some flexibility for a future property owner to bring in different alternative arrangements, as long as they can demonstrate that it's generally consistent with the community's vision as it stands. So I think that's, that's, seems a reasonable sort of middle ground.
And the other question I had concerned the triangle lot, you have it as public institutional, but if it's a boatyard, wouldn't that be coastal-dependent industrial or, doesn't seem like public institutional to me?
Any thoughts, Scott or Jeff?
It definitely could be. We felt public institutional worked for both of the anticipated uses there better than coastal-dependent industrial.
So there's flexibility in the way you can categorize a particular use?
Well, the museum could be a public resource if there was a public ownership or a public private partnership, and the boatyard could also have some public ownership to it. We didn't feel that the museum could be categorized under the industrial category.
So also, I would guess, moving forward, if things were to change and we were to get a project for the boatyard to come forward, and as we negotiated through what that looks like, one of the options is certainly lease. This probably works if we're leasing property out there because it'll be more of a public-private partnership at that point. If the council's desire at the time when we went through it said, hmm, nope, go ahead, let's sell it to them, then we'd have to go through the process of looking at this and probably changing it. Sort of, this is kind of our best shot at capturing what could be and covering what was likely to go there, realizing that, you know, if something else comes along and it does get sold, then we'd have to change it probably.
So there isn't a category that is broader, like mixed use, commercial, that would cover both?
It's, it's something we could apply to it. I, I mean, that is broad and would cover the, a number of uses that could go in there. I mean, so we, if it's the desire of the council, we certainly could change it.
Well, I, I'm just trying to keep us flexible, basically.
Yeah, our issue, you know, really what we're trying to resolve in this instance is kind of our existing land use plan doesn't really identify public facilities, which is really kind of strange. Because normally when you see a map, there's a, you know, a classification, so these are public facilities, and you go through there and you look at them, you're like, oh, it's a school, there's, you know, there's a hospital, there's, you know, there's City Hall. Our map doesn't do that, so you would, you know, unless you know where everything's at, you're not going to see those things on it. So it's just kind of strange.
Thanks, Marlos. Yeah, I, I'm probably going to ask similar questions that have been asked, but just for clarification. So basically, the recommended uses is what we're discussing because coastal is, is going to be looking at those. And to the comments we had from planning commission, hey, there are a lot of unknowns, are we restricting our opportunities? So in the question for Marlos, specifically, public industrial and then harbor type of use, can you not have a dual use? In other words, if you looked at that whole spot there, could you just not say, hey, it's, it could be any of these? Instead of having a visitor-serving block at the very front, I mean, who's to say that visitor-serving might be farther to the left? I mean, we're, we're literally putting boxes in there on what we should have. Can you not just say, hey, it's just kind of a variance of all these? These are the various uses that are being proposed on all those? And that be acceptable for both the coastal commission and basically what the desires of what we've talked about, both within the community, from the planning commission, and, and here to, to achieve things? Because I, I just, I look at that and maybe that one box there in front of the power plant isn't the right spot. So how, can you clarify a little bit of that and provide some flexibility other than just designating some boxes on there and colors?
One, one alternative approach could be to essentially use bubbles instead, you know, more general bubbles expressing those types of land uses as a mix on the property with a ring around it, basically saying it's subject to a future master plan.
Okay.
I mean, then, then you're getting across sort of the, here's the mix of uses that we think right now would work. We're potentially working well with the coastal commission by including some visitor-serving commercial, but it's all subject to a future master.
Okay. And I would say, you know, I don't know where our wildlife center falls into as far as use, but, you know, if something like that, we're going to remain there, is, you know, will that fit in with, you know, mixed use? I think, you know, we need to, to kind of identify what's there, and is there potential to keep that type of thing there as well? So maybe the bubble thing, as it goes through the process, we'll be seeing this again and we'll be able to, I'm sure we'll be seeing this again, so I'll just leave the comments the way they are.
In our intent is not to make the wildlife center not conforming in any way, shape, or form.
Yeah, okay.
What would be potentially the commission and council's pleasure regarding that southern property that Dr. Teft brought up?
The what?
The, the property to the south of the colored area.
So I want to come back to that actually, because I was kind of surprised, because that is power plant property. So I wasn't sure why it wasn't in kind of the, the bubble there. What reason, why, why was that left out? Because it is power plant property.
It probably happened because it was a separate parcel.
Yeah.
And so when we were mapping, and they applied the color, it didn't go over there because it's a separate parcel.
I would, I would say we, it's part of the power plant, we would include it, absolutely.
I couldn't, I was trying to figure that out earlier based on conversations that we had had, and I couldn't figure out why it wasn't.
Okay, cool.
So potentially, moving forward with more general assignment of the land uses within the area, bubbles, if you will, with a master plan requirement, including the southern area, is kind of what I believe we've heard, is that consistent?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the mammal use, if that's commercial, if, you know, maybe that kind of designation pops up on the screen somewhere.
All right, we'll move ahead to Site B. Amy's going to present this one.
So moving north, we have Site B, which centers on Tascadero Road and includes your existing wastewater treatment plant, your desal plant, Lila Kaiser Park, some accommodations, the edge of the high school, et cetera, and some mobile home and RV areas. So we have existing, there's quite a bit of existing industrial use here, as you'll see on the existing land use in your packet. What we talked with the public and the G-PAC about was what would happen when the WWTP is relocated and possibly the desalination plant is no longer there in the future. And what we came up with for the preferred alternative is to have primarily a mix of open space and recreation and visitor-serving commercial on this site. I also want to mention that there is a portion of the mobile home park on the, the west side that is currently not part of the colored-in area here. And that's partially because it's part of a very large, a larger parcel that includes a section of the beach. And, but we are open to discussion of that and could see that being included with the visitor-serving commercial that's applied to the, the rest of the RV storage and so forth there. So this goes a little bit, oh, sorry. Got it. So otherwise, changes here would be to change Lila Kaiser Park to open space recreation. It isn't a city-owned park, but that would be the logical designation from our perspective and from the input we've heard. I think we've already gone over most of the rest of this. And one of the key things that happened during the input was to note that there are potential flooding issues closer to the coast in this site. So the open space recreation designation was applied. The preference was to apply that in more of the area than the visitor-serving commercial. That was a different alternative that was considered. And I believe that the G-PAC felt generally that that was the good way to go. So we are open to questions on this one. So, we are open to questions on this one.
Plant Commission?
You have on your, there's two alternatives, is that correct, on this?
We did look at two alternatives during the process so far, and the one that's up on the screen is what ended up being preferred, based on all the input so far.
Okay, so, when you, when your operational definition for open space is no construction, no building at all?
I believe it's extremely limited in terms of building, so it's recreational facilities, conservation, recreation, passive recreation, that sort of thing.
The reason why I bring that up is when the mayor first got elected in the Coastal Commission meeting and when they decided to, when the movement of the plant, the Coastal Commission was adamant that there was to be no building on the current wastewater treatment plant site. The other thing that I want to mention, so the public is aware, and I have contacted the Coastal Commission recently regarding this, is that the Coastal Commission does not have authority for us to move the wastewater treatment plant, okay? They, they are not, can't force us to move that plant from its current location.
This is both a comment and a larger question, maybe it would have been better before. I'm kind of at a loss for why the corner parcel is open space, because the dunes kind of preclude a lot of the use of that as something that views the ocean. I do think something that I don't see in the general plan at all is some kind of vision statement about the use of some of these natural resources in the esches that we have and actually expanding the environmental impact aesthetically of enhancing the esches. And so, I would almost prefer that the green and the visitor-serving commercial be flipped on this, that we actually stack the Lila Kaiser Park and more open space along the creek and start to think about enhancing the waterways that we have through the area and making the investment on the streetscapes that we have. And I do think we should include that little piece of the larger parcel in the visitor-serving commercial. This is the, one of the few places that we can get affordable visitor-serving commercial in the near term, and I think we need to think about enhancing that end of 41 corridor as a really high-impact part of the city.
Could I also, I'd like to add also, it would probably behoove to look at the facility master plan from about 2009, when there was a flood study done, and in order to address some of the flood issues, they were talking about an inverting, using the Tascadero Road, putting it, making it a channel, an inversion of the road instead of a dome, like an inversion, so you can guide, you don't want to talk about, Scott? Okay, so you can guide the floodwaters down there. And so, it, I would, and then also the Hanson's property, which is a concrete plant, was also used as a diversion for floodwaters, so that, that might be something that can help in the land use of that area.
The recreational vehicle spaces that might be removed, do we know how many spaces we might be talking about? And I would imagine these are short-term, but maybe in practice are longer-term. I'm just curious about that.
It's an existing RV park, like a campground, basically, and then there's RV storage over there as well, but the portion on the front is mostly all, is all RV park.
So, what, so we would be in effect permitting a developer to sort of remove those in terms of replacing it with commercial development, or am I wrong in that?
I don't think the idea is for them to be nonconforming. They would conform with the visitor-serving commercial designation. So, just, the existing land use is industrial, which isn't what we heard was the vision for that area.
Okay.
Yeah, it seems like our flooding problem in that area is mostly from Morro Creek, not from seawater inundation. So, it seems, you know, why can't we do a planning on the creek and enhance the creek, similar to something that they're doing down in LA, where we have an enhanced esha there with an enhanced water flow and a capability of a parkway included that and a walkway included and even a bike way possibly, and then solve our flooding problems for that whole area? And then, that allows that wastewater treatment plant site and then also the site that's not blocked in to be of a higher use as mixed-use visitor-serving. I think this, this area really should be studied also in conjunction with the power plant area to do a full master plan of both of these sites together. And including, including in that, I know it's heresy to say this, but the connection of 41 and Embarcadero and bringing it across through in a full master plan of both of these areas. Segregating these areas, I think we're limiting the possibility, we're limiting our possibilities on both of them and not optimizing the return for the city and in both recreation facilities and then economic viability for the city.
Yeah, I would just, with regard to the RV park there, it doesn't make sense to leave it sort of undesignated, you know? In other words, it needs to have a land use designation of some kind. And clearly, what's compatible with the existing uses is visitor-serving commercial. The, I don't think there's much chance of anything happening on the beach there due to environmental constraints, so I don't think we're, you know, we're in danger of having that occur. My recollection is that the risk in the WWTP area was, in part at least, sea level rise, that that was going to, that that is going to be a future issue. So, I think we'd have to look carefully at what's allowed in terms of increased development in there. One comment that was definitely made in some of the public comment sessions and that I would concur with is if we're going to have this, these two areas of open space, they ought to be connected. You know, we ought to provide connectivity between the planned open space in the future and the existing open space at Lila Kaiser, and I would hope that when this comes back, that you can find a way to provide that connectivity.
Also, I just wanted to clarify that where the RV park is shown is not colored in. That is open space recreation currently. We just didn't color in anything outside of the site that we were considering, so that's the current designation.
So, then this is a nonconforming use currently?
This is our partner.
But it's not going away? I mean, so, designating that as visitor-serving commercial, doesn't that partially mollify the Coastal Commission with regard to some of the other issues we talked about?
It's hard to speak for them. But it seems to make sense because mobile homes are protected use in the state of California.
Red?
Aren't we going to continue to have a lift station in this area after we remediate the WWTP?
Somewhere in that area, yes, because that's where all the line's trained to.
Yeah.
Yes, somewhere over there.
Okay, so, you don't need to designate in this a particular location or a use site for that?
Public infrastructure, it depends, a little unclear where it's going to go at this point to me, and, yeah.
Does it make sense, though, to make a note someplace that it will be there?
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to coordinate that with the WRF effort, talk to that, you know, to make sure we're doing it correctly. So, it could be, we need to touch base with them.
Okay, and have you coordinated this parcel with the school district administration to get their input?
I don't think we've talked to them yet. No, I don't think we've talked to them yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you plan to?
It's a good idea, yes.
Okay, thanks.
And that's actually, it was a question I had, considering those two rectangular lots across the street from the existing wastewater treatment plant, knowing where the high school is going to be and the school district is building their pool, and it's been mentioned in the last few years that one of those rectangular lots, if not both, could be, and I see how it's on visitor-serving commercial. If those do become, is that too limiting to call those visitor-serving commercial if they're going to be parking?
We didn't actually propose any changes on those parcels.
Well, no, I'm just looking at those two rectangular lots and their color is visitor-serving commercial.
Right.
Is that appropriate if they were to be, as that pool is completed on school district property, that they become parking lots? Do we have to, I guess the commercial word is the word that I'm looking at going.
The pool's outside of this area.
No, it's, if you look on these two rectangular lots, it's their housing of their automobile and then the pool is going to be right here, next to there.
The pool, the pool is...
I, no, I understand that, I understand, but there's been talk between the city and the school district in the last few years, where they're going to be building this pool in order to allow public Morro Bay city access and not necessarily letting city people who want to use the pool go onto school property. They're talking about using one of these rectangular properties, and that has come up in the last few years in terms of as some sort of parking area that then non-school students and faculty would then be able to access. And so, I just, I don't want to use one of these rectangular lots being too limited in saying it's commercial if it does become a parking lot. And the only question to you is, has that come up with the school district? And Red kind of asked the question, but that's one question I'd want to ask the school district, and that's all.
Okay, John? Marlos?
I had the questions about the school, so thank you.
That was it? Okay, all right, sorry about that. I just want to follow up on a couple of, I'm going back to the previous slide for the power plant, and there was a question, Scott, I asked you earlier today when we were going through that, and that is basically the creek, and even though it's the power plant property, the conversation was that that's, you know, it's zoned that way, there's probably esch there, it'd be worked out in the mapping and everything. But, wouldn't it, I think, looking at these two, if you look at these two slides together, wouldn't it make sense to have some designation of open space recreation on the power plant site to designate that creek area? And that would connect both, that would kind of designate that creek as kind of a restoration area and maintain that as open space? And then, that would complete the pie, if you will, that goes over to Lila Kaiser. Is there, can we, can we add that? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, it certainly could. I don't, there's no reason why we couldn't do that.
I mean, it's primarily going, as I understand it, would be esch, so it'd be, it'd be good to kind of connect that, yeah.
The trick probably would be determining what the, what the edges of that are.
Well, I mean, for this, for the sake of this conversation, I think, we're, it's pretty good discussion then. Okay? Okay, all right. Those are the only comments I had, thanks. And next one? Thanks.
I could perhaps attempt to clarify maybe where we are on this one. I heard some discussion about potential master plan requirement for this property area as well. What are, what's the Commission and Council's pleasure on that?
Just to note that we're sort of already walking down that road a little bit. Your FY 1718 goals talk about us starting that process, sort of the, starting the outreach component of that, maybe as part of this effort, maybe, and then potentially going into FY 1819 and doing a master plan for that site, so we know what it would look like. So, that's kind of been the internal discussions about that, and you've probably heard us mention it, I don't know, a half a dozen or more times at various council meetings.
Is that clear enough then, Jeff?
It is, it is. Perhaps this is as proposed with an open space connection between the two open space areas designated there, with a master plan process, as Scott indicated, and with the additional area to the west as visitor-serving commercial where the RV park is.
Yeah, I didn't quite understand that. Well, can you, can you, I think, was that Commissioner Luer?
Sure, somebody else can talk all the points.
Yeah.
So, at the lower-left part of the site...
Got it.
You can see there are some mobile homes not in the colored area, so part of that parcel could be carved off and added to Site B and also designated visitor-serving commercial.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you. I get the easy one. So, this is Site C, this is the proposed water reclamation facility site, and this is located at currently, clarify this for me if I don't get quite the facts correct, but this is located currently outside the city limits. There's an active process and proposal for this site. Our approach here is to identify it as an opportunity site, designate it public institutional, reflecting essentially the city's, at least at this point, you know, process toward designating that as the water reclamation facility site. So, this is again, one, no change, just confirming existing direction.
Okay. Plant Commission? And any comments from council? Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. You're up, Amy. Oh, I can do this. Okay, the next up is Site D. Site D generally refers in whole to the downtown waterfront strategic plan area. And just for process-wise, this is an area that was essentially sort of set aside and a separate, but parallel process was engaged to prepare essentially a strategic plan for the downtown and the waterfront area with the premise of attempting to sort of unite those areas and strengthen the connections between them. As part of that process, a number of sites, 15 of, you know, 15 different locations, either specific parcel locations or corridors, are identified in that plan with what are referred to as catalyst projects proposed for them. Catalyst project being something, you know, a tangible type of project that could be matched with a location in the interest of really catalyzing economic development quickly within the downtown or waterfront area. The range, and there's a range of catalyst projects and a range of sites that are identified. Again, some are corridors, some are parcels or sets of parcels. Only some of the areas, in fact, very few of the areas, sites what we're now calling D6 through D9, again, of the 15, they're numbered in sites 6 through 9, in order to accommodate the recommended catalyst project, a land use change would be necessary. So, for example, these are areas where maybe, and in fact, I think in all cases, they're currently designated commercial visitor-serving. The type of catalyst project proposed might not fit that, you know, fairly narrow land use designation well. And so, the general proposal in these areas is to modify that existing designation from visitor-serving commercial to mixed use, to potentially accommodate the proposed catalyst site. So, I will just kind of walk through these together and then perhaps discuss them as a whole. So, the first of these is Site D6. This is a series of three vacant lots that are located at Market Avenue and Morro Bay Boulevard. At this location, you know, the existing use, the existing land use designation is visitor-serving commercial. The preferred alternative would be to change that to mixed use, and it could be that it's the mixed-use visitor-serving commercial. What this ultimately would do would be to open up the visitor-serving commercial designation a bit to allow some additional flexibility to accommodate the catalyst project. Could also potentially accommodate some housing uses if the catalyst project isn't what ultimately takes place. takes place, because you're now introducing the potential for mixed-use projects on those locations, with the intention that the commercial portion remain visitor-serving, if we go down that road. So, and the catalyst projects for this site that have been discussed in terms of the range of projects could include a full-service hotel and conference center, or a different type of, of more creative mixed-use project. The second of these is Site D seven. This consists of a number of city-owned lots at Embarcadero and Pacific Street. Sorry. At this location, the proposal is to change land uses from, again, visitor-serving commercial to mixed use to accommodate the range of catalyst projects. In this case, the catalyst projects discussed in the downtown waterfront strategic plan could include some form of open-air market or seafood hall, potential ecotourism uses, or again, a full-service hotel and conference center option. And the third is Site D eight. This is a vacant lot that's located at Embarcadero and Marina Street. For this location, again, the existing designation is visitor-serving commercial. The proposal would be to change that to mixed use, again, potentially the mixed-use visitor-serving commercial flavor, to accommodate a range of catalyst projects that could include, but not be limited to, a market or seafood hall, some form of family outdoor entertainment, an ecotourism use, some sort of cultural maritime or historical museum use, or again, a full-service hotel and conference center. So again, what, what the downtown waterfront strategic plan does is it doesn't affix a specific project to a specific parcel, it identifies a parcel and a range of opportunities. So what we're attempting to do with the general plan and land use, or and local coastal program at this point, is build in some flexibility to accommodate that range of potential uses. Okay. The next is Site D nine. This is a vacant lot that's located at the intersection of Harbor Street and Moro Avenue. Again, the existing use, the existing designation is visitor-serving commercial. The proposal is to, to switch that to mixed use in order to accommodate some form of creative mixed-use project or a cultural maritime or historical museum. And I'd be happy to entertain discussion on the downtown waterfront strategic plan sites as a whole or individually.
Plant Commission, just to remind us, so we're, we've got thirty-five minutes. It doesn't look like we're going to be able to get through all this, but we need to conclude about a quarter or ten till, and then, so anyway, turn it over to Plant and Commission, then we need to discuss how we get through the next phase. Thanks.
Damit? Yeah, I, I agree with this. The one thing about it, though, that I'm very concerned about is a lot of these are, you're putting them together in an aggregate here, which I think is helpful, because it seems like a lot of it's very piecemeal. And this idea of, you know, we have such odd piecemeal planning right now, Quintana, Main Street, Morro Bay Boulevard. I wish I had a better understanding of the idea of Morro Bay Boulevard controlling what's pulling these things together. Because to me, more visitor-serving housing doesn't help us that much. I mean, we've got great opportunity spaces for that. I like the idea that you can build housing, that people are going to be in seven days a week instead of two or three days a week, that are going to shop here, be here in the evening all the time, potentially more affordable. But, so I'm, I'm very open to thinking about this. I do think the visitor-serving commercial aspect of the retail is important to focus, because I don't think we're going to help ourselves if we let all these things be equal everywhere around the city, that there's something more to draw, kind of a focus together, especially as we're looking at the Centennial Stair area and things like that.
I, I would like to have just, just this, this section, this D section, to be able to discuss this in a Planning Commission meeting on a separate agenda, just to be able to process. What we're dealing with, there's a lot, lot to process here, and try to get some organic discussion and, on this, and what direction and how we're gonna, what we're looking at and how this is going to integrate with, with what we, what we want to see in Morro Bay. Just on a overview, personally, I think that some of the nightlife, trying to bring it in, there's, recently, there was a remodel done over at the Sirens, if anybody of you gone in there, it's, it's pretty nice, nice building the way it was done. So those are the kind of discussions that I would like to have at a Planning Commission meeting before we move and, and, and make any recommendations.
This area, both the Embarcadero and the downtown, and the linkage between there, is incredibly, you know, connected with the, the design guidelines and the specifics that go into these individual zonings. So where do we pick that up in this process that we can designate these areas with streetscape and with, you know, augmented heights for, for density values or for, for parking in the, in the center of the, of the blocks where we, where we can offer increased density and increased heights for residential and mixed use in here? Where, where does that come in the process?
Right. A number of those recommendations are part of the downtown waterfront strategic plan. Other parts of it will come forward as part of the zoning. So I mean, to, to say, you know, the full, the full range of things you mentioned would be picked up between those two pieces. So I mean, there, there are, those are moving forward as well, in those, in those packages.
The DWSP does have design guidelines in it for the downtown and the waterfront.
Right.
Yeah.
I'll try to be succinct. First of all, the catalyst project of a full-service hotel slash conference center, those are two very different animals. And I, I have serious, serious reservations that there is any site within the Embarcadero area that is sufficient to allow a conference center. And I'm not at all sure that that use is economically viable in Morro Bay. That's a two-hour discussion, so I'll leave it there. The, the second issue, I don't understand why the street ends are not identified as opportunity sites. Clearly, these are very important sites that we need to be planning for the future. And the only one that's included right now is the one that would be part of the Centennial Stairway. There are a couple of other sites in this area, which I identified to you in writing, that I think need to be included as well. In terms of mixed use, this is where specifics are very, very important. For example, Site D seven, I would be very much opposed to mixed use that allows a residential component in that area. I just, we know that given the chance, in Morro Bay, historically, residential uses have supplanted commercial and visitor-serving uses, given the chance. And I think we need to look very carefully at what sites we do not wish that chance to be given. And, and finally, with regard to the other two, the D eight and D nine, you know, one of the things to look at here is to look not just at the vacant lots, but to look at underutilized lots, which are adjacent or in the same block, that, you know, to, to look at the other uses that are, that might be combined with these sites that are not being utilized to their highest and best use currently.
Red?
I cannot add to the wisdom of Dr. Teft. I agree with what he says.
Matt? John? Marlos?
I, I just want to ask what you mean by ecotourism. I've always been concerned with the use of that term as a possible project. I have no idea what it could possibly refer to. And then also, the Maritime Museum, it keeps coming up in all of these various areas, and yet we already know where it's going to go. So I would like to see us be a little bit more careful about what we know and what really are maybe some catalyst projects.
Certainly appreciate that comment. And it does sound a little bit odd when you think about it, but here's, here's where you're sitting at. We don't know actually what, we have an RFQ out right now for the development of a boat haul facility on a triangle lot. When someone that is familiar with that type of project comes forward, it might take all of the area that's over there that's available for, for that use. And so there wouldn't be any area available for the Maritime Museum, say. And so we'd have to make decisions then. They said, Dave, for it to be economically viable, City of Morro Bay, I need all of this area. Then we need to make decisions. And so when we were doing the outreach, a lot of folks thought, hey, maybe it'd be nicer to have the Maritime Museum over here, or over here, or over here. And so that's where that came from. It was pretty organic, and it came from the public. They looked at what was over there and thought that would be a good place to put it. They also said, even though we kind of know where the aquarium's going to go, they were pointing all over the place going, put the aquarium over here. It was, so it, it was, it was really, you know, from the public input side of things at our workshops that, that sort of, where that derived from, I guess.
Okay. And ecotourism?
I don't have the definition in front of me, but Lorelei gave a very nice definition a couple G-PAC meetings ago, and from what I recall, it obviously includes tourism, so visitors, and then there's a real focus on the natural environment being emphasized and the importance of preservation of the natural environment being part of that ecotourism. I think one of the examples we talked about at that meeting was going out to the oyster farm on a kayak and learning about what they do and why it's important for the ecosystem and so forth. So it, it has a pretty wide, broad definition, but it, yes, on purpose.
Thanks. Just want to comment on the, one particular site, the Market Plaza site and the mixed-use component, just picking up on the comment from Dr. Teft. So identifying that as mixed use versus hotel commercial-type designation, you know, why wasn't there more discussion on that as far as, for, for this particular site? Did the mixed use provide more flexibility? But then, I guess the other point is, do we want to designate the opportunity as hotel visitor-serving? So that's, just speaking to the Market Plaza site specifically, I just want to, just, yeah, D seven.
We're just sort of checking our notes. And so I think it could stay visitor-serving. I don't think there's anything of the catalyst project ideas that came up there that would be inconsistent with that. In fact, obviously, you're going to see that later this evening at the regular council meeting. And had a specific conversation with G-PAC about that, you know, to get focused input from them. And I think, I don't think there's anything that came out of G-PAC that would controvert that. So it doesn't have to be mixed use, it could literally remain visitor-serving, based on the concepts of, you know, what was discussed at, at G-PAC.
So just to piggyback on some of the, some of the other comments as far as opportunity sites, we're looking at opportunity sites of vacant parcels instead of opportunity sites. As Dr. Teft pointed out, there's other opportunity sites within that block. Would we not consider redesignating that land use, mixed use as well? Or, and I would refer to that D seven slide that you have up there, there's the one parcel that is on the, it's, it's basically the, the, no.
There's the car wash, there's on the same block?
Well, the car wash is one, but there's the parking lot behind it.
Yep.
Then there's the antique kind of place there, so.
And there's the dirt lot next to that.
Yeah, and there definitely, so was there not discussions on that kind of thing as an opportunity, and why we wouldn't want to be having that in this discussion as well?
There's certainly things that could be added, so there are probably lots of sites where things could happen.
Sure.
These came out of the, you know, the public workshop properties, and we identified several opportunity sites, and we had to actually pull it back a little bit. There was twenty-something sites that were there, and it just, it ended up being too much. And so we were trying to really focus on some ones where things really could happen, and so you got a lot of mostly vacant lots shown there, and some that have properties on them, and some that's sort of a mix. But that's where it came from, and we just, we thought that there might be an issue if we had too many, lack of focus, I think, is sort of what the concern was.
Before we go on to the next part here, I'm trying to think that we can get through that in the next ten minutes or so, and then we've got to talk about next steps and how we get through the rest of this. And I would say that we, we worked pretty diligently last time, the two, these two bodies were together and doing that, but we have to accelerate things to get through everything, and I would contend we need to designate at least another hour to these types of meetings. And, you know, consider whether or not we want to break this up into a PC meeting and a city council meeting. And I think that's a discussion for council at some point, because we're operating on a schedule, and the schedule is driven by the budget in which we've allocated for this process. So we're, we're on a schedule for this. Is that correct, Scott?
Correct.
So we need to revisit that if we're going to be able to, to get through all these, because right now, we're not going to be able to get through this, this meeting and the time allotted.
Correct.
Okay. All right. So with that, do we think we can get through this next slide here in the next ten minutes or so?
I would endeavor to, let's do it.
All right. Let's give, let's give it a go.
So Site E is focused along North Main Street on the east side of Highway one, between, very close to Highway forty-one, and then all the way up to the city limit. This area is currently designated mixed-use neighborhood commercial slash medium-density residential. There is one large site that is designated high-density residential, near the middle of the area, and a few other things mixed in, but that's the majority of the area. What we're proposing, as I mentioned earlier, is to do away with the medium-density residential slash neighborhood commercial designation, and simply to have a neighborhood commercial designation. So a lot of the area that is currently designated mixed use, we are proposing that that be designated neighborhood commercial. We are responding to what we've heard from a lot of the input, which is that this area has developed with a lot of residential. There are definitely some nodes of commercial, there's Manfredo Plaza, there's the Spencer Shopping Center, and so forth. But there is a lot of residential along Main Street. So we're entertaining several ideas that we would like your input on. One is to designate a lot of the area along Main Street as neighborhood commercial, which is shown on the map in the pink. Another idea that came up at the G-PAC was to have nodes where the neighborhood commercial is focused, and so we've circled some areas based on what's on the ground now, Spencer's is one of those areas, et cetera. So that's another option within this preferred alternative, is to focus the neighborhood commercial. Otherwise, we did hear that we don't want to replace the existing commercial uses with residential, so if there's a way to reinforce that, and that's part of why we're proposing, what we're proposing. We also heard that there are some places back from Main Street where the on-the-ground land uses should be reflected in the designations, so that's between Sequoia and Alena. There are some changes there, and we're happy to get into details on that if you like. We did hear, we did get quite a bit of feedback on the high-density parcel as well, but we are not currently proposing changes to that designation. But we did hear a variety of opinions on whether that should remain high-density or not.
Okay, great. PC?
At the risk of ruining the meeting, I'm all for the high-density. I think that's one of the best places we have for high-density because of the school and the, and the potential for shopping. Is this one intended to be one story, or just a, just a, an idea about use? Because I think the, the one-story thing, it's going to be one or the other, it's either housing or, some of those structures are already two stories. I, I just see lots of vacant storefronts. I don't see who's renting those spaces. They go to residential because nobody rents the spaces. So I think there's some things like the Spencer's parcel, it makes a lot of sense to gather retail around it, but I'm, I'm not convinced that you need to see, or, or is there a driver to make that full strip commercial? commercial?
I just would like to make a note that the infrastructure there, as far as, whatever we put there, there's already traffic issues, but also the infrastructure, any kind of, any kind of density, the sewer infrastructure is already over capacity. So any kind of development there has to be tied to upsizing the current infrastructure. And the only, the only thing about the density, again, the traffic issue in this area has to be, is pretty, has to be considered carefully.
There's a couple, I'm having a hard time figuring this site out, but there's a couple empty parcels there that are large enough to go commercial. Have we thought about changing those from residential to commercial so that they would actually have, they're in a nexus with the motels and stuff. There's one site that came before us a couple years ago, where 30 units on it or something. You know, I'd like to see a potential for any of the commercial to be there, if it's viable to go commercial on the larger lots.
And the one site that you're talking about actually has an approval line, it's moving forward.
Okay.
For residential housing.
Okay. Too late. And then also, we do need to upgrade that fence line with Caltrans and get some, part of the reason that commercial doesn't work there is because the design guidelines are non-existent there. So this is another area that needs design guidelines.
And to be clear, though, the neighborhood commercial would allow residential on a second story?
And behind.
Yeah.
Couple things, you know, there are certain areas along here...
Your microphone?
There are certain areas along here where commercial seems to be working, there's areas that don't. I think, I think the specific areas that are outlined as nodes need to be reexamined and very well-defined. And certain other areas where it's not working perhaps should be rezoned to residential. And then the other thing that I would look at is the very southern end of this that comes close to Highway 41. That's an entryway to the city. And I think perhaps the very southern end of this strip that you have here would better be incorporated into that opportunity site rather than relating to the rest of the North Main Street.
Red?
I'm just not sure that designating the whole length of this area as a neighborhood commercial is going to make it happen. As was pointed out, there are vacant storefronts there. And we can say it's going to be something, but that's not going to make it happen. The marketplace is going to dictate what it is. And I hate to take away alternative opportunities by designating it simply as one thing.
Matt? John? Marlos?
I was just curious, there are residential units along there. How do you deal with that in calling this neighborhood commercial?
Some would end up being conforming and some would end up being non-conforming. It just depends on how they're, some of, there are residential units on some of the things that are developed with commercial uses that are upstairs, which would likely be compliant. There are others where it's just residential, that would end up being, when you implemented zoning, likely non-conforming.
Okay. And I noted that several of the motels along there have actually turned into residential units. So I'm curious to know why we're proposing more commercial perhaps when it seems to me that they're turning residential.
A lot of the area has just gone towards that residential development, which is one of the reasons the response to that is, we should preserve the commercial corridor there because, I mean, and some of the ones that are vacant storefronts, those are old buildings that are not in good repair, you know, and often, so it's, I don't know, that some of them are even viable to reuse as commercial without significant reconstruction. So I think it was just the idea that we were losing a lot of the opportunities there and that we should maybe be a little more focused on not losing so much of it.
Okay. Great. Thanks. I guess I would agree with kind of the linear zoning or land use of that, that maybe there's more opportunity for clusters. Just, and think of that, those are my only comments there. And with that, I think we could, we probably need to conclude where we're at and then identify next steps to get through this. So Scott, you know, we'll conclude this portion of the meeting. We need to be able to, I guess at some point, really what it needs, comes down to is it needs to come back to council. We need to be discussing increasing the budget and the number of meetings that we're having, or at least the number of times, because this time slot that we've just been using has been a little bit too condensed. So we still need to get through this in a specific timeline. So I guess we'll need to schedule another, either a joint meeting or a separate meeting, duel to do that.
A separate.
And then council will have to be looking at, you know, budgetary requirements to be able to pursue this and get through all this in a timely manner, as you pointed out, to get it to coastal and get it all certified.
And we're putting some information together so you can tell me to make those decisions right as we speak, so.
Okay. All right. Great. And then that'll conclude the, this portion of the meeting. And then I was going to go ahead and move on to, the next item on the agenda was review of public meeting process. And I asked to add this to the meeting with a joint meeting, and I just wanted to have this topic with the Planning Commission Board and council as a result. So I brought this on and Dr. Teft and I talked about a specific meeting that we had with the Planning Commission on March 7th and had a good conversation. I just think it's viable for the Planning Commission and the council to understand that conversation and kind of reinforce where we are as a council and advisory boards. So because of the Brown Act, it's kind of hard to discuss that, so you basically have to have the open meeting to do it. So I'll just do the introductions on that. So March 7th, Planning Commission meeting, as liaison, I was watching that meeting and some of the concerns I had were the meeting process, the public comment. There were some outbursts and, as I explained and had the conversation with Dr. Teft, those are the types of things that, what type of meeting environment do we set by allowing outbursts? And we have policies and procedures that our city council adheres to and our advisory boards are too. So I just bring this to the attention of the board in this format so we can have that discussion and understand that the policy and procedures that we have in place, both the Brown Act in front of our meetings where it says what our public comment period is and particular outbursts or clapping, one person speaking at a time. So I just want to speak to that and make sure that, that particular, and as I'm generalizing here with those from the, from council, I would just encourage you to maybe review the March 7th Planning Commission meeting to identify with that. But we just want to reinforce that we value public input and we want to ensure that when we're doing public comment, that everybody has an opportunity to come to the mic and that perhaps the outbursts from the public are controlled and contained where we don't promote the clapping and cheering. So everybody here will have the opportunity to speak and not feel as though they can't do that. So Dr. Teft, don't know if you wanted to respond to any of that, but, you know, or the rest of the Planning Commission, it's, I think it's relevant because, you know, understanding as mayor and chair, you know, it's challenging to operate and facilitate a meeting, and we all want to do that in the most appropriate and effective way. So unless there's any other comments from council or Dr. Teft?
Yeah, I would just like to say, I feel, number one, I feel it's a balance. I feel there's a balance to be struck between encouraging public comment, and we certainly do encourage public comment. And, but I also feel that it is incumbent upon members of the public not to abuse that privilege and to observe the requests that we have with regard to time limits, with regard to speaking only once, with regard to being respectful to other speakers. And, you know, I just would like to suggest that in the future, when we, if we, if we find it necessary to sort of reinforce that respect that we should have for each other, that that is in order to encourage free communication, not to inhibit it. So kind of deal with it in that spirit, please.
I think there's, the bigger problem is the use of advisory boards. I've been sitting on the WORFAC advisory board, and what we've been negated to is more of a review board. The staff has made decisions and then we go and just review decisions that have been made. So I think that the Planning Commission, I applaud Chairman Teft, the way he brings it all together, and we have good, organic conversation. I think that the public deserves a right to make their concerns heard. And, but I think that the way that the council's currently running their advisory boards, except for the Harbor Advisory Board, they're just been negated to review boards.
Thanks for those comments, and we'll be bringing back the advisory policies and procedures to address some of those as well. Appreciate the conversations, unless there's any other comments from council or anything? Seeing none, that'll conclude the meeting and we'll adjourn. Thanks.